What are the action? A, school committee plan for use of surplus. Two, funding technology purchase Chromebooks. Stop the school department.
Twenty-one, Mr. President. This is a joint meeting.
It's a joint meeting, so the school departments gonna have to open their meeting?
Our meeting was open earlier today and we just kind of put it on hold. We had to go up and handle another issue, so we're reconvening.
All right then.
So our meeting isn't been official.
Record reflects that? Yeah, record reflects that?
That's seven one, that's seven fifteen. We're not holding it till now.
So continuation of your meeting?
Yes. I'm not really sure what the vote you just took. I'm not really sure where that puts us. And my first question kind of is, why didn't you do this earlier? We've been having this dialogue for several months with the town council with regard to the spending of the fund balance. And we waited until, I believe, December third, when the opinion letter came in terms of who had the authority to spend the money. And I understand that tonight you are, you've just taken a vote that I'm not really sure where, what that does to the meetings we've been having and the expenditure possibilities we gave you copies of in preparation for this meeting. I think that we are doing our very best to be cooperative with both the budget committee and the town council. And this document is not an official plan. It's titled expenditure possibilities. School committee has not voted on it yet. We're here because we wanted to hear what you had to say about the possibilities that we are looking at. And I'm not really sure what that vote does to where we're at, except to further drag out the conversation we're having. We haven't voted on anything yet that was received in your packet. These are possibilities that we are looking at. We haven't, as Mike said, had a full dialogue as the school committee. We're here because we want to be cooperative and we wanted to listen to your input. And I'm surprised that you're seeking at this, you know, several months after we've begun the dialogue, that you're now seeking the official opinion. And I'm wondering why you couldn't have done it several months ago. I guess that's my first question. I don't really know where we're going with this tonight.
We'll review your plans before the spending of surplus. Like I said, in your first letter, you mentioned to the fact was that the letter dated December twenty-third, 2015, that the Chromebook expenditure of $63,622, which was approved contingent upon the opinion of RIDE, that it would go to, or that it would not be a maintenance of effort, however, is that it's apparent that if we do approve it, and therefore it will be noted maintenance of effort?
The $63,000.
The $63,000.
Right. And that's the second item on the two that we were here to discuss jointly. The first I agree was the expenditure possibility list that we gave you, expenditures from the surplus balance.
If you want to move forward on the other items? Your possible expenditures?
Did the school committee actually discuss the memo of the expenditure possibilities stated January nineteen, 2016? Have you all had a chance to look at this and make recommendations, or no?
Yes, we've had a chance to look at it. We have not officially voted on any portion of it yet.
So if I may, I think, I think the last time we met jointly, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, the takeaway that I was, I had an understanding of was that we were gonna go back to the table, we were gonna figure out a plan, and come back and vet it with the town council. I think the two items are mutually exclusive as far as whether the school committee has purview over those funds or not, but I think we can still have the discussion. I would agree with, with Mrs. Nato that the message you're sending to us of communication is negated a little bit. When I hear, yeah, the school committee already got two advisory opinions, but we're just gonna go get one anyway now. I think we've vetted this. I, I don't disagree with Mike in that the town council as a body needs to figure out how to address this in the future, figure out whether you want to make a charter change, whether you want to put it on the radar and fix it going forward. I think we already do have an advisory opinion. So, I mean, you, you made the vote, you can go, you know, do that. I, I think it's chasing our tail a little bit. I think we definitely have a disconnect between the two bodies, and that's the part that needs to be figured out. I'd rather figure that out in a room together than you five sitting up there making a vote to go figure it out with RIDE. I, I would suspect, this is my own personal opinion, they're gonna say they gave you an advisory opinion. So, I, you know, I wish you luck there, but, but I think the understanding that I had was that we're here tonight, we've presented what we have as a preliminary plan, and we're looking for feedback from the town council on, is that acceptable? Is there things that you take issue with in there? And then our job from there is to go back to our next school committee meeting and have that discussion that Mike referenced that we have not had, and figure out what we want to do. And figure out how we're gonna finalize that plan, put it together, and decide what to spend or what not to spend. And we have not had that discussion yet. We have discussed individual items here and there, but we have not had the larger discussion on whether we're gonna move forward with anything, because we were waiting for, you know, we wanted to get vaccinated for your.
I'd like to hear your opinion on each and every item, and your rationale. I mean, it's.
Well, with all the respect that's in the packet, I don't think it's my.
Well, no, 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 but I'm saying from a perspective is that, you know, all these, if, if a lot of these items haven't been vetted by the entire, by the entire school board.
I guess we can talk in generalities.
I think you're missing the word that each of the line items hasn't been vetted by the school committee, or I think the items have been vetted. The decision that we're facing is what items do we want to choose to vote with and spend? But I don't think that you can quarrel with any of the items as they appear. They're all meeting the timeframe you need quarrel with, but I think that there's nothing on that list that the students and the schools don't need. The timing is something we can have a conversation about, but I don't think that any one of us has any quarrel about specific line items. I think it's more a question of the timing.
What is this? These are real separate priorities? Is there specific items we'd like to address sooner than later?
Well, the school committee's gonna have that conversation on December, on next Tuesday, February ninth. I'm not really sure what your vote has done to our own process, your vote to seek yet another advisory opinion. I'm not really sure how that affects our ability to vote and move forward with anything. I just really don't know that. And our attorney's not here tonight, so you've taken the meeting in a venue that I didn't anticipate, but you'd actually be looking for yet another advisory opinion.
Well, look, because the school committee has had their opinions, council has not, not put forward its case dealing with state laws or local, or local ordinances or dealing with our charter. So in other words, if this, if this, if the, if the state law is neutral on this, and something in our charter says something different, then therefore we want to make that known, and to see if that's, if that's a game changer or not. And this, so this, therefore, once this is done, we're not gonna go back in two, three, or four times. We'll stay on case, our solicitor's very effective, they'll stay on case on behalf of the council, dealing with state laws, local laws, and we'll wait, we'll, we'll wait till we get the, we get our opinion. And if, if it's, if the school committee has, or the school department has the authority to do so, then, then it's done.
I guess I just think it's unfortunate. It's been at least a three-month conversation and dialogue. It's just unfortunate that you didn't seek your opinion when we were seeking ours as well. I just, I don't know what it does to our, to the timeframe without speaking to our own attorney.
So purposes, I agree with what I said. I don't see the two as being totally tied together. Could we just present our, our, this proposal to you tonight, go over the details of what is being proposed and what the rationale is for each of these? I just, I think the best person to speak to is the superintendent who drafted the proposal. So could we ask that he just bullet highlight by the blocks on the summary, a brief synopsis of each of those categories of expenditures, and why they're necessary, and what they will provide us with?
I guess I'm questioning, do you want us to go through each one of these, or?
Absolutely.
I tend to, I tend to agree with the side of the school committee on this, and I mean, that's why I brought up the, the other types of opinions, but these, what I read them on, they seem like alternative measures. We can do this, 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 and this, and the school committee's gonna pick through them, maybe add or delete some stuff. I actually had made the comment to, to, I'm not sure if it was Mr. Rapo earlier today or Ms. Lombardi, I said, you know, the one thing I'd like to see on there is putting money in that contingency fund that grabs forty percent back return on bond. And that's not on here. So, I mean, obviously there's stuff that can be added, deleted, discussed. That's the way I took this. And again, that goes back to the previous meeting we had where we had asked for input from, from the various boards, not just basically come up with a plan, then we'll vet out the plan, then the plan is done and here you go, right? That was, that was the, when we left that meeting that night, and it was in December, that's what I thought was happening. So I intend to agree with Mr. Bassett on that. Like, I thought that's kind of the route we were going down.
Mr. President, if I may. Finance has seen the proposal and has seen the five-year plan. And what finance has done is prepared a comprehensive approach to funding both the $585,000 in the short term and all the balance of the health and safety in a two-and-a-half-year plan, which addresses town funding, because ultimately the taxpayer's gonna be responsible to fund these projects, whether it's through MOE or not, whether the fund balance is used for it or not based on the ruling. Ultimately, these things have to get done. So this plan has both school fund balances, town operational funding, RIDE thirty-four percent reimbursement estimates, and a portion of a bond issuance, which would do every project they need in a two-and-a-half-year plan. So what I'm gonna do is hand this out, because I vetted the, well, Saturday, because I don't have a life, I wrote the concept. Today, my kids were at a, at a party I wasn't at, so. And today what I did is I took the five-year, five-year plan and physically put the numbers in to see what it would be. And if you look at the whole plan, we're not that far off. I think the point, the best point here was work together. A plan like this puts everybody at the table, ultimately the taxpayers on the hook regardless. So why not work together with a plan that addresses all funding sources, that addresses all health and safety, that addresses moving us forward together? So what I'd like to do is hand this out for review to, I believe there's only two people from the budget committee, so I'll hand you these. Here is seven for the school committee, and here's five more for the town council. Again, it takes into consideration what they have, what we have, and how to get us down the road. Regardless of the opinion, it wouldn't affect this plan, because this plan would be everybody together to work for a common goal.
Okay.
You're really horrible.
Can you walk us through?
I'm not really walking through.
I'm thinking people would forget a chance to read us.
Jason, you're awesome, but I have no idea what's in here.
All right. Page one. Page one is the sixteen appropriation surplus, which was $700,000 and $400,000 earmarked, right?
You're talking about this year's surplus. It'll be at least $700,000 at least at $740,000.
Correct. So in my number one is just an estimated current year ending. In my number two is if we took that $700 and actually earmarked it to the programs you don't have currently, what would the end result be? This section populated by me specifically on guesses. This is something the school committee would really have to enter, what you expect to spend that $700,000 on. Follow me?
Wait, we already spent the four.
Yeah, but now we're talking about seventeens, $700,000.
Nobody's talked about the budget for next year.
Well, that's what, this is a two-and-a-half-year plan, so I gotta address surplus at the end of fifteen, plus FY sixteen, plus FY seventeen, plus FY eighteen, to come up with the plan, you know what I mean?
But you're anticipating a surplus.
Yeah, assume there's a surplus.
I'm anticipating you splitting that up, to have no surplus.
You're, you're starting at one point, one million.
Correct.
And, and going from there, so we've already spent $400,000. You're including the fund surplus, and you're including this year's fiscal surplus.
Yep.
Okay.
And then to get to FY eighteen, which is two A, I would just assume contractual increases would eat away all the rest of the appropriation that's not earmarked to those programs. So then number three is just, this is the proposal of fund balance that was provided in this, which is they have 1.3 million, and they want to reserve 450. I absolutely agree with the reserve. I've presented a fund balance reserve policy to the council's table. It's gonna come back on the agenda for review.
Mr. President, if I may. Jason?
Thank you.
It's obvious that the school committee is new to them too. How about we, we have a day or two or a week to digest this, we come back and just one thing on the agenda, a joint meeting?
Your suggestions exactly.
Is that what you want?
A workshop, a workshop.
A workshop. President, Nato, what do you think for, for your school committee? Chairwoman Nato, on time.
Well, I think that's better than having us look at it and be totally caught off guard here tonight.
I, I can't process it right now. It's too much. Does that, does that make sense to, first of all, makes sense to the council?
Yes.
The school committee, budget committee? Why else just get into a room, a, a, a special workshop meeting in a week or two, whatever, whatever the timeframe is so that we can have time to digest this?
And what would be your hope at the workshop? That we would have just a dialogue with Jason's document and with the expenditure possibilities that we presented to you in your packet, and that we can have input at that meeting?
My hope?
Yes.
Collaboration. We come to some type of agreement, and, you know, the school committee, you're elected, you're appointed to administer the funds, and we just want to make sure it goes right. I think we're gonna have a great relationship, I hope. At least let's get it started, and by having a workshop. I think that'd be more of the first step. Have all parties involved, and I think we can get up and running on it. Could maybe the budget subcommittee of the school committee meet with Jason?
Absolutely.
In greater detail?
Anytime, any question.
Yeah. Does that make sense to everybody? And at that same meeting, maybe we could have the superintendent share his proposals with Jason as well.
His, his proposal is the basis for mine, actually.
I sort of couldn't figure it out from looking at it.
Well, if you look at page two, halfway down the page, five hundred eighty-five, seven fifty-five, that's exactly the number from the school's proposal. So I took their short-term proposal with their long-term five-year proposal and created this from it, which is a two-and-a-half-year address-it-all kind of situation.
So I, Mr. President, I believe your next scheduled meeting coincides with our next scheduled meeting, because we're meeting on Tuesday for the Monday holiday.
We're meeting on February ninth, next Tuesday.
On February ninth, okay, so you're not coinciding with.
No.
So, I'm just trying to think of a date that, because I want you guys to meet first to maybe actually have some discussion amongst yourselves on this planning, what's most important, so we have something to focus on. But I know, just going back to the formal hearing, my vote of yes on that was not to deter any further communication that we have going. I absolutely want to work with the school committee and come up with the best way to spend money and not take control away from that. I want the absolute best for our kids, for the school committee, for the school department as a whole.
Okay, well, I think I understand what your hope is, and we are meeting a week from tomorrow. There are six of us here tonight, six out of seven of us. I'm personally okay with moving forward to have a workshop and to have the school committee have an opportunity to review Jason's document and have a conversation about it next Tuesday. I don't think another few weeks will make a difference in terms of the expenditure possibilities we presented. There's nothing on the list that isn't needed, the timing you might have issue with, the timing might be extended on some of the items, but I think that all the items are needed. It's just a question of, I mean, maybe we go up together on those issues. I'm personally okay with it.
Yeah, I said it earlier, I just wanted to make sure all interested parties are contributors, the budget committee as well, if you, so, is that what you were saying?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sure I mentioned that workshop.
Include the logic.
Yeah.
Where does the motion that you just made to seek another advisory opinion fit with moving forward to have a joint meeting?
I didn't, I didn't make a motion.
No, I, I mean, yeah.
I'd like to.
And she's very trying to turn it.
Just go with it. It's, it's not to seek another advisory, it's to, there's an appeal process to that decision.
Okay.
If you read the end of all those letters, it says any just a party can appeal this to, to, to the commissioner, and nobody's had an appeal. So the council was asked tonight for the first time to make an appeal, so they voted to make an appeal, so he only got the letter. The letter was issued in, in December, and was asked by the, by the budget committee to appeal it to the commission of tonight.
Yeah, thank you, that makes more sense. That wasn't the motion. I, I think, I think that was part of the discussion, but the motion was sort of.
I take it for me to appeal.
That explanation makes much more sense.
Good. Thanks. For Steve Rapo?
Yeah, good, yeah, I'm sorry.
On the planning list, the planning board is reviewing these items on capital expenditure. A lot of these were also reviewed last year, and some were low immediate priority. So if you're gonna invite a guest list for a joint meeting, maybe you should invite the planning board, who's looking at these capital items already. So we, we do rely on the, on the planning board when we look at capital in our budget process. So if they're looking at the same values, it'd be good to get your opinion on these items that are gonna be presented.
Go play. Julie, I think. Counselor, Julie, I mean, the school committee, Julie.
Yes, the council. I just want to say I'm disheartened. You asked us more than enough ago. Put a plan together, make sure the superintendent was here. We did that, we're here, and it's gonna go another month, at least, before you get the next decision. We're trying not to spend anything, because you've asked us not to. You've asked us to work jointly with you. We're all willing to do it, we're all here, except for one. And now you put forward to get another opinion or a final opinion, when it could have been done two months ago. I don't understand, if this is what you wanted, why didn't you just ask forward two months ago, instead of waiting for us to get an opinion, waiting for somebody else to get an opinion, and now we still can't go forward? We have contracts that we have to try to negotiate with both the unions, both of the unions can't do anything. We're trying not to do anything, because you've asked us not to. Mr. Soli asked us last time, or stated last time when we were here, that he felt that you guys have no jurisdiction over it, that it's ours. We're trying to still work with you. We put together the plan, like I said, the superintendent's been here since seven o'clock this morning, you put us ten from the agenda. I'm very frustrated. I'm willing to work with anybody at any time. I think this was a lot. We're all here, and we haven't done anything. I feel like it was total waste of my time. That's all I have to say.
Just, on the next time we come back, can we also just put in the back of your head a discussion on the capital reserve account, and maybe the finance director does have that in his calculations? But for example, if we, so it's, it's more on the funding side. So if we were to establish a capital reserve account through RIDE, and the school department were to put in so much money, and the town were to put in so much money, let's say $500,000 a piece, that would allow us 1.34 million to be spent. Now, I don't think that, if we were to use that for health, safety, we might be able to avoid, you know, floating the bond at the level we needed to, that, or we were asked to float it, meaning saving interest, saving borrowing costs, saving legal fees. So if we have the money, okay, and the finance director has done that, hopefully, and, but that's something else I wanted to just discuss as well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we have a note with everyone's clear understanding. So can we, can we assume we're gonna, that the school committee will meet next week? Deb, I'm assuming you're gonna reach out to Sherry and Wardney and get dates for a workshop? Yes? All right, it's eleven, good. Thank you, Jason, I appreciate what you did. And then Thursday's planning board meeting has a capital budget for the schools up for review. I'm gonna assume that we're gonna pull that pending further changes, because clearly if we're gonna be discussing this, there's no point in them wasting time Thursday night discussing it, or for the superintendent to be there to present it to them, if it's all in flux. So we'll take that as a takeaway to reach out to the planning board.
There's plenty of other questions, a part of the discussion, a bit of a meeting as well, with the representation.
Okay.
And we all meet, school committee, council, budget committee, in the planning, in the planning, in the planning board together.
Okay, the only thing I'd ask ahead of time is for purposes, I think Mia had a lot of good points, we've put a lot of time in from the school committee side, you know, we're all, some of us are on multiple boards, three meetings a week. When do we meet that evening? If we could set a definitive start and end? I know personally, I'm done at ten. And so, so we'll do a special meeting, get, you know, get together, but if we could set up some ground rules at the start, five minutes per, you know, I don't know who wants to take that as a, as a, you know, to, to figure that out, but if we could set up some ground rules to prevent, you know, forty-five, fifty-minute discussions on one item, I think that would be beneficial for everyone.
Mr. President, with going off of Mr. Bassett's suggestion, the last time that we had an all-boards meeting, so to speak, we had a moderator, and I think that went fairly well.
Actually did work well, yeah. Yeah, that worked, yeah, yeah. I think we're gonna need a moderator.
You did.
Yeah.
So that might be something that we'd want to consider, is having a moderator. So we're not all trying to run everything at the same time.
I think, I know the last time it worked extremely well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
it addresses control, it addresses the town having a seat at the table. It, it is in there, and the, and the last page is kind of the wording recap of what the plan is. So if you want to start with a generic version of what we're trying to accomplish, reading the last page might be startling for you, because the rest is more numbers from the capital plan, which is less important than concept, I believe. I think the concept is really what's important here.
Jason, a question. Do you think possibly if we go into this together, including what they gave us?
They are one and the same.
No, I'm just saying, but we can, you know, we can look at it in, like, cross-reference it.
Oh, yes, I've already done that through color coding, so I'm trying to make it easier. I just, I tried to make it as easy.
Yeah, we'll start the retail between who knows, coordinate the meeting dates of everybody, so that workshop, we'll have a moderator.
Right.
Well, this is just a workshop, just with Jason itself, before...
Yeah, I get that, I get that, but we can start looking to the future and bringing all the boards and all the commissions and everybody for the workshop, with a moderator. So, who's going to help for that?
Top guy.
Okay. Let's go.
Just letting you know when you want.
Yep, okay. And to see if maybe Mr. Nato will be able to be the moderator once again, if that's possible, if you do a standing generalization.
May I ask this? I know this is, you know, we all have activities, but Monday night or a weekend, I know the younger folks on the council have basketball, and their kids come to school, but let's just try to get the staff in sooner than later, if we can.
I'd be able to Saturday.
Saturday, any other dates?
I don't know. Maybe a Survey Monkey, and see what we can do. And then it's going to go with the school committee, the budget committee, the planning board.
So, you can do that at the time, or...
Monday?
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 Mondays?
Mondays.
Mondays?
I don't like Mondays, tell me why, or is it a tell me why?
Monday?
Okay.
So, we're making progress.
No, no. Jason can go over this with us, a Monday, if it's convenient for school committee, budget committee, planning board.
So, sometime after February 17th?
Sometime in this month, though, right?
They say, who's supposed to be having a meeting? Right, and then we would have ours, which is September, so as long as that happens, because they're too tight for...
It's a Monday, I'll be...
So...
So, you're just talking, you're talking scheduling?
Scheduling.
Okay. It's not being clearly stated.
We'll just try to arrange, we'll be ready, our next scheduled meeting with Jason to go through his worksheet, and cross-reference it with the information the school department has given us, and then after, we'll meet all boards, I guess, with the budget committee, the planning committee, the planning board, there's also the superintendent and the school committee, and we'll go through all this together, and, like I said, it's, we're getting forward to the presentation before we go over the school department, so this way everybody will be up to speed, and we can hash this thing out.
Okay.
Okay. I guess the other, I know it's funding, take...